Unless you hurt yourself.
To all bodies.
So.
Like the man. I was. The worst step, but it was funny because I. For Mr. Powell. I was always. I think last week best. And then if I had to run to a city meeting. I would just go in my head. I mean, they knew what I was doing. But sometimes. That's the year when he dressed down.
Want everybody to get home on time. Good evening, everyone. That slid right in there. All right, first item on tonight's agenda, we'll call this meeting to order. This is our study session for February 21st. It is 5:31. First item on the agenda is a presentation and discussion relating to the overview of the city's new website. My two favorite people are here.
Oh, thank you. Hello.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Heather Kennedy. I am the Public Information Officer. This to my left is.
Rebecca Stanley. I'm your Web Services Media and AV Specialist for the city.
So hello, Mayor and Council. We're here this evening to talk about the website redesign and what we're calling Casa Grande Alerts or CG Alerts. The two items we're discussing today will officially be launched on March 8th at the State of the City. However, we wanted to give you a sneak peek without, of course, stealing Councilmember Fitzgibbon's thunder because this is actually her focus topic at the State of the City. So in terms of the website redesign, we wanted to talk about why, why the redesign in the first place. So a couple of reasons why is to create a more secure backend and frontend for the users. To plan for the future needs of our residents and employees. To be more inclusive for all residents, including those with a disability or those who speak a language other than English. It is easier on the backend to train support staff. It creates an in-house redundancy in our department so that Rebecca can go on vacation.
I know.
And we can still make changes to the website. It approves, it improves upon the design and flow of the site regardless of the device that you're using. And it increases the city communication with its residents and employees. So we chose a company called Civic Plus and they are one of the best in the industry. We chose them for a few reasons, specifically because they were the most responsive and physically responsible out of the companies that we received the quotes from. We already use multiple products through Civic Plus and all of these will be integrated into the website. Those include C Click Fix, Moncito and Civic Ready. They also own Archive Social. Why this is important is this is the product that archives all of our social media. All of our social media accounts, which we are required to do as a government agency. And then they build their sites based on the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines standards to ensure that the content can be easily accessed by all citizens. And then they finally, they offer additional products that we can grow into in order to streamline the services that we offer to our citizens. So we're going to do a presentation of the website that you'll be able to see on the screens in front of you. When we started the redesign process, we surveyed our residents and we had 557 respondents. They completed the website survey. We asked them how we could improve our site. And some of the topics that were mentioned that we answered the call to were specifically the main menu or the how-do-I component. Staff directory. They wanted to know how they could more easily connect with staff. They wanted a more straightforward way to pay for fines or their utility bills. They were looking for a more modernized design. They wanted us to keep up with technology. They wanted to be able to adjust the font size on their own depending on what their requirements were. They wanted to see what our city events were upfront on the homepage. And then they wanted to be able to have a better search function. So when you put something in the search, it would actually come up, you know, and be relevant to what it is that they were looking for. So I'm going to hand it over to Rebecca and she's going to get you to the homepage and then we're going to do some demonstrations.
All right, so welcome to our new website. It's been a process. It's been almost a year getting this completed. So we're just going to kind of run through the homepage and we're going to start at the top here for, as you see, we have what we call our Alert Center. So items that we are wanting to get out to the public and let them know immediately. We have this alert bar that appears on every single page of the website. So currently, right now, we have our Thornton Road construction and we have more road maintenance throughout the city. So we're advertising it there. If you go down a little bit, this is where you can create a website account. So you can log in and this is where you can manage all your subscriptions of all the different ways you want to receive information from the city. And we're going to cover that a little bit later in the presentation. So here is our mega menu and this is where, this is new, how we broke it up into sections. And this is kind of what the public was asking for, multiple ways to get to an item because we all think differently. So we broke it up into living here, your government, city services, doing business, and how-do-I. So currently, this information that's listed is based on Google Analytics of what people are commonly searching. So this can change depending on our residents. So we run monthly Google Analytics to see what people are looking at. So we can change our website to reflect their needs. So one of the items also was quick links that they wanted to see on the homepage. So we've added more. Before, we just kind of had these graphic buttons up here. But we've also created new boxes here for residents, visitors, businesses and government. So here, this information can change also depending on the type of information we're receiving back from Google Analytics. So we scroll down.
You just answered my question before I.
Yeah, and if you guys have questions, feel free to chime in and we'll answer the best as we can. So we'll scroll down a little bit. So spotlights and news, these are events that are coming up that we think, you know, the city would be interested in seeing. On the right-hand side, this is more news stuff. This is going to be all city news on the right-hand side. So that includes all departments, anything they need to share or get out to the public will appear here. This does not, on the right, usually include calendar stuff because we actually have a separate section for that. So we'll scroll down. So this section is our upcoming meetings and events. We do have two tabs here because the feedback that we received from our residents, they wanted to keep city events separate from public meetings. For those who just want city events, they didn't want to know about the meetings and kind of vice versa. So right here, we have a public meetings tab. And if you click over, we have city events. But if we go to March, you'll see samples of what's coming up. My computer froze. Sorry, I don't know why March is acting weird for me.
Just so you know, the website is six days old.
So we're working out kinks that may come up.
Absolutely. That's right.
We'll look into that one. So now we're going to kind of show you how our ADA compliance tool, which is through Moncito, which is also owned by Civic Plus. So we're going to go into our city manager page. You can see our nice photos of Larry and Steven.
Great pictures.
So with Moncito, it's a great tool because it lets us, or let the user who may have a software that does screen reading. It'll kind of help them through it. People who may be dyslexic, you can adjust the font that way to help them see. You can also adjust the font size here, but we also have that kind of built in into the page itself. So they don't technically have to use it here. Then we also have contrast. So it's very customizable based on how that person may need help.
And that's what Moncito is?
Yes, that's our ADA compliance tool. Oh, yes. So and then also we have Google Translate, which is available for those who may have, you know, English as a second language.
Hey.
Hebrew.
Goodness.
Right. So yeah. But yep, so. Like I said, this project, you know, we just launched. So we're working out kinks before March 8th, which Councilmember Fitzgibbon will get to announce. Any questions or concerns or anything like that?
Just a quick question. So the pay online will allow people to get like their business license? Get their dog permit or their alarm registration or all the things that we ask people to do?
So currently, our pay online, sorry, I'm stuck in Hebrew at the moment.
Pay their sewer bill?
Okay, so right now, finance, they have their bill pay online, which includes sanitation, irrigation, landfill, airport leases, business license and other miscellaneous services that they may deal with. And then we also have our court fees that we can pay online. As for business licenses, I don't know if they had a software that they wanted to implement into our system. But that's something that we can definitely look into and add that feature if that's something that we're going to.
Well, accounting is responsible for that, right, Larry? Steven?
Yes.
So that's part of accounting's process.
Then that's included then.
Okay.
It'll be for city court.
Yeah, so city court and finance, they have two separate systems online that they have for people to pay bills. So anything that happens through.
So this isn't for financing? This is just for city court?
This is both.
Okay.
Yeah, so it links them here and they can pay their, you know, their bill online for finance. And then down here, it says Casa Grande City Court Payments. And they have their two different ways that they can pay their fines or bonds.
There's no questions. We'll go ahead and introduce CG Alerts. So we're going to talk about Casa Grande Alerts. CG Alerts will officially be launched at the State of the City on March 8th as well. Over the next two weeks, we will be working through integration and testing the platform. CG Alerts is a mass communication tool where citizens can opt in to receive customized alerts from the city. So we'll give you a few examples, but there are a couple of, there are a myriad of things that folks can sign up for to receive alerts on. They include bid postings, calendar notices like city council meetings, news flashes, any city news. They can subscribe for newsletters. That includes from the police department or economic development. And like sanitation service delays. So what's great about this is that it's customizable, customizable. So if you, as the user, only want to know about road construction, for example, then that's all the alerts that you will receive. So we can do a test for CG Alerts. We're going to have a marketing push, a marketing campaign push for this. And there's going to be QR codes that will be associated with CG Alerts. So it'll be easy. Folks can just scan with their phones and then it signs them up automatically with like the top, you know, four or five alerts. Folks can then go in, establish their own login and then they can customize and add additional if they would like or even take some of the ones away that they automatically get subscribed to. So with that said.
So if you guys want to participate in the test, what you're going to do is you're going to compose a text message. And the phone number is going to be 38276. I have it on the screen in front of you. And then you're going to text the word CGTEST.
Is it case sensitive?
You're switching on me? Yeah, so capital C, capital G, capital T, EST.
All one word, right?
All one word.
Says I'm already signed up.
So.
There it is. You should receive a text message that says you're signed up for Casa Grande AZ Community Alerts for Groups. If, if we did it right, then it should pop right up.
Shows that I have four users in that group. So let's do a.
We're going to send an alert. Did you get it? Should say test from the city of Casa Grande. Good? Well, that's a good sign.
So we can make a bunch of these keywords. So if we can, I don't know, whatever we want to advertise or whatever we want people to sign up for. Let's say they just want traffic alerts. We could just say, you know, CGtraffic, text to this number and then they're automatically input into that group. So they'll receive notifications moving forward of any traffic notifications.
I think the first test you sent out, we were able to actually go into it and put your preferences in.
Yeah, I had a link included in that one. Yeah. So now when you go into CG Alerts with that phone number, if you don't have an account, then you'll be able to log in with that phone number and adjust your information.
Do you guys have any questions about the notification system?
You have a big QR code for me at the reveal.
Yes, sir. We will.
Looks like your C Click Fix.
We'll have banners with QR codes and we'll have contact cards with QR codes and.
Counting on that.
All kinds of good stuff. Yes. Great. So I just wanted to point out that this has been a coordinated effort between all the city departments. We got a lot of feedback from the PIO Roundtable and then we asked for folks to review their pages. So it took every, a huge coordinated effort with all of the city departments to make sure that their content was correct. And we moved some things around. We added a whole bunch of stuff. We edited. Again, you know, we're, for the next couple of weeks, we're going to be fine tuning the website and CGAlerts. But we didn't want to provide the opportunity for you guys to get the sneak peek. I specifically wanted to mention Rebecca and Mindy in the PIO office because they have been working on this for about a year and they've been eyeballs deep. So, you know, they have, I'm sure that they're excited to launch it on March 8th. And that'll be the culmination of all of their hard work. So.
Yeah, and then Mac and Aaron, they also were on our web committee and helped us out. So, yeah, I thank everyone. It was definitely a group effort.
That's right.
Good job.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Anybody have any questions for them? Can't wait for it to.
I had one comment. I passed my first test because I always look for the landfill information. It used to be really hard to find and it came right up today.
Wonderful. That's what we want to hear. And if it doesn't, then please let us know.
Seriously, I was like, that was always my thing. And I looked it up today and it just went exactly.
Yeah, and we can adjust each page with specific keywords. So if it's not popping up how we want to, then we can just throw those keywords in there.
What's this, what's the symbol going to look like?
I'm sorry?
We're going to have a symbol, like an app symbol?
Yes.
For the CGAlerts?
Yes. You'd like an icon, like a logo essentially? Yes, it's in design.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Make it, make it cool.
Oh, of course.
That's right.
It does.
Because I have a bazillion apps on here, so.
Right.
It's got to stand out.
Yes.
Blinking.
Yeah, blinking CG neon sign.
That looks like an alert.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Thank you all. I'll put in the crow's nest too. All right. Good deal. Larry, the next item is on the Airport Master Plan. You want to kind of introduce this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to update the mayor and council on the Airport Master Plan. I'm actually going to invite our airport manager, Mr. David Refner, to come to the podium and introduce the team that's been working on this for pretty much the same amount of time that we were working on the web. So we've been busy this year, but this is just another project that's.
I saw Aaron in the hallway and he had a tie on. I didn't even recognize him.
He definitely dressed up.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate you being here tonight and allowing us to present to you. I want to thank you all for all your support and advocacy that we receive from each of your individual offices. This is the reason why we develop quality documents and information research for you all to make educated decisions when you vote on things at this level, at the council level, whether it's policy decisions or financial decisions. We need things like the Airport Master Plan. The Airport Master Plan is something that we update in general every 10 years. This one's actually been 13 or 14 years since we updated it in 2009. So it was well passed to you. And I believe we developed a quality document. And with that, I'll introduce our consultants from Kaufman Associates. They are the industry professionals and experts in aviation planning. This is Shandra Burks and Matthew Quick. And I believe Shandra will be taking over from here.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Dave. And good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for your time this evening. I'm here to, as he said, provide you with an overview of the Airport Master Plan, outline the findings and recommendations of the study, and ultimately ask for your approval of the plan. Before we get into some of the study specifics on that, I do want to go through a little bit of background here. As Dave was saying, the last master plan was adopted in 2009. And that included an update to the Airport Layout Plan Drawing Set. That was subsequently updated again back in 2015 and did reflect some notable differences between the 20, or 2009 plan. So with about seven years between that last ALP update and this one, it's time again to evaluate the airport from a long-term development standpoint and see what makes the most sense in terms of facility planning. So this study was initiated back in December of 2021. And we conducted a site visit at that time to meet with airport staff and gather information about the airport, its tenants and the users and the community as well. And from there, we moved right into our first Planning Advisory Committee meeting, or PAC. This group consists of airport stakeholders that represent different entities and interests. This included representatives from the city, airport users, the FAA and ADOT's Aeronautics Group. So the role of the PAC throughout this process is to essentially serve as a sounding board for the planning team as we move through this project to provide feedback and comments as we go through the process. So a few things, what is a master plan and what is it not? So it's a long-range planning study that looks 20 years into the future. Both airside and landside facility needs are evaluated based upon the projected aviation demand. These studies, as Dave was saying, are typically conducted every seven to 10 years or so, or as demand dictates, to stay. or as demand dictates, to stay up to date with current planning standards and to reflect current conditions locally and within the aviation industry as well. Ninety percent of this master plan has been funded through the FAA's Airport Improvement Program, and the city has been responsible for the remaining 10% of the study costs. So there are certain elements of the master plan that the FAA approves, and these are the aviation demand forecasts and the ALP itself. But it is important to remember that this is a local document, and it's meant to serve as a guidebook for the airport and the city to turn to when they come together each year to develop the airport's capital improvement program. And then lastly, it's a chance for airport stakeholders to weigh in on all matters related to the airport, including direction in terms of growth and facility development. It's also a good way to get the public interested and involved with the airport and teach them about this important asset to the community. So a few things that an airport doesn't do that are worth pointing out. First of all, it's not a guarantee that any of the projects depicted on the airport layout plan will be developed, nor is it a guarantee that funding assistance will be available from either the FAA or ADOT. But what it does do is it gives the airport and the city the option to pursue grant funds as any project that the airport wants funding assistance on must be depicted on the airport layout plan. Lastly, it does not provide environmental clearance for any of the projects that are shown on the ALP. There is an environmental element associated with this plan, but it's really more to serve as identification of any potential red flags as they relate to the planning projects. So one big element that we had with this plan was a public outreach component. And we did want to maintain a transparent process as we moved through this. We wanted to involve the community. We want to educate and inform the public about this important asset. So some of the things that we did to promote that public outreach was we had a study-specific website that was developed just for the airport master plan. That's where all of the project materials were contained. There's an option for people to submit comments through the website. Social media posts were also created. I know that CG chat was a big conduit to get information out to the public. And then we had public information workshops throughout the process where we held an open house format at the airport terminal building and interacted with members of the public who had questions about the plan. So as far as the master plan process itself, it's broken down into three phases. Phase one kind of serves as the foundation of the plan and consists of the inventory, the forecast, and the facility requirements. And as I mentioned, the forecasts are one element of the plan that is approved by the FAA. And these are really what the rest of the plan is based upon in terms of ultimate facility planning. So we had our first planning, I'm sorry, excuse me, we had our first Planning Advisory Committee meeting back in January of 2022 where we kicked off the project and introduced everybody to the process. And then our phase one meeting was held in April of 2022. And that was also when we conducted our first public information workshop. From there, we went into the airport alternatives. Then we met again with the PAC and had another public information workshop. And then we moved into phase three of the plan, which includes the recommended development plan concept and the capital financial plan, as well as those environmental considerations that I mentioned before. From there, we had our final PAC meeting and public information workshop. And now we're sitting at a draft final master plan. So we've pulled all of the pieces together. You have the documents in front of you, I believe. And now we will be asking for your approval of this plan from this point. Once we have that, we'll be submitting the ALP set to the FAA so that it can go through their approval processes, and then we'll be at the final stage of this plan. So just kind of a brief overview of the study itself and some of the highlights. We are projecting growth in both base aircraft and annual operations with base aircraft increasing from 102 to 167 over the next 20 years. Operations are also projected to increase from about 122,000 a year up to about 165,000 a year. So it's important to keep these numbers in mind as we talk about facility development at the airport and what may need to be planned to meet that projected demand. Another part of the forecasting process is to determine what the airport's critical aircraft and runway design code are. And these are done by reviewing a database that the FAA maintains. And it's important to determine these planning standards to see what the ultimate airfield design needs to look like in order to meet the FAA standards. So in the future, as the fleet mix nationally and here at Casa Grande as well transitions to include more jets, we are looking at a planning design code of C2 2400, and the ultimate aircraft is the Challenger 600. So this is the overall recommended development concept that you're seeing here. And the major elements on the airside include a 2,100-foot extension to runway five, bringing the total runway length to 7,300 feet. And this again is based upon the anticipation of more frequent jet traffic in the coming years at the airport. So these types of aircraft require longer pavement lengths to safely operate, especially during hot summer months. And at this length, 100% of the business jet fleet can safely operate at 60% of their maximum takeoff weight. The parallel taxiway is also planned to be relocated to meet those ultimate C2 design standards that I mentioned a moment ago. And then we are showing a runway threshold displacement on the runway two-three end to bring the runway protection zone, which is kind of that trapezoidal area that you can see off of the highway and the Valago development. The FAA considers these to be incompatible uses, and they want to see plans in place in order to mitigate that. So on the land side, the major elements include buildout of existing airport property on the south side. We did focus heavily on segregating vehicle and aircraft movements, and we're showing construction of several new access roads in hangar areas. And then we also have an option to expand the existing terminal building to accommodate projected growth and potentially an FBO or fixed base operator locating at the airport in the future. The north side offers significant development potential as well. But to do this, a north side taxiway is necessary, as well as vehicle access roads and utilities. So this development isn't envisioned until the south side is fully built out. Potential locations for an aircraft, or, excuse me, an airport traffic control tower have also been evaluated. Before a tower could be constructed, the airport or the city would need to coordinate with the FAA, and other studies would be necessary, such as a benefit cost analysis and site selection. But what we were looking to do here was just identify a few potential locations that could be suitable for that type of development in the future. So due to the displacement of runway two-three, declared distances are implemented. And these basically tell pilots what amount of pavement they have available for takeoff and landing operations. So there are four declared distances, the takeoff run available, the takeoff distance available, the accelerate stop distance available, and the landing distance available. And each of these corresponds to a specific planning standard as well. This slide shows a graphic representation of the declared distances and how much available pavement pilots would have to work with during takeoff and landings to either runway end. Again, the intent behind these is to meet FAA design planning standards, such as moving that RPZ off of the highway and maintaining full runway safety areas around the airport. The end result is that aircraft taking off from two-three would have the full length of the runway to work with, but landing operations would be shortened somewhat to 5,855 feet. And then on the runway five end, the takeoff run available is impacted, as is the landing distance available. Noise contours were also developed as part of the environmental component of this study. And these have been developed for both the existing and ultimate conditions and are based on the types of aircraft currently and projected to operate at the airport. So the FAA has defined the threshold of significance as the 65-day-night average sound level, or DNL. Anything at 65 DNL or greater is considered to be a significant impact to noise-sensitive areas, such as homes, schools, hospitals, things of that nature. These maps here show the different DNIs on and around the airport based on the projected aircraft that are using the airport now and in the future. So what you see in the green shading is the 65 DNL, and then the other colors represent higher DNIs. And essentially, these noise contours remain on existing airport property in the existing condition and on the ultimate airport property in the ultimate condition. So there should be no issue there as they don't extend over any noise-sensitive areas. So from the recommended development concept, we did create a capital improvement program, or a CIP, which is divided into three phases, short, intermediate, and long term. And then the short, the short term is broken out by years and covers the first five years of the plan. The intermediate and long term cover years six through 10 and 11 through 20, respectively. But these are grouped rather than annualized in order to allow greater flexibility for you and airport staff as you develop your updated CIP every year. So projects in the short term are those that are considered to be the highest priority. And these generally include things such like as pavement rehabilitation or modifications that are needed to meet FAA safety design standards. So it's important to remember, too, as you're looking at some of these numbers, this is a point-in-time analysis, and so priorities will change, and this is likely to be updated and shifted around every single year. So in a nutshell, the short term right now comes to about 10.7 million in total projects. Intermediate term is about 32.97, so 33 million. And then the long term comes to about 22.8 million with a total CIP of $66.5 million. So again, it's important to keep in mind that just because these projects are shown here, it doesn't mean that they have to be completed. It's all based upon demand and justification, nor does it mean that funding would be available. But these are the costs that, that we are looking at over the next 20 years in order to achieve the development plan as it's presented. So the development plan has been staged to show you which areas are focused on in each of the phases. Again, the short term largely consists of things like pavement rehab and a couple of safety-related projects. The intermediate term is primarily associated with the runway extension project and construction of relocated taxiway on the south side. And then the long term is centered upon that north side landside development. So our next steps are again asking you all to review and approve the 2023 Airport Master Plan for Casa Grande. And from there, we will be submitting the ALP set to the FAA so that it can begin moving through their lines of business for their review and approval. And then we will be at a final stage where we will print a final document and have that available for you all to use in your long-term planning at the airport and then ultimately to execute the plan through your annual budget. Any questions?
Is the drop zone in this plan?
That's a separate study. I'm gonna let Dave talk a little bit about that.
Sorry, Dave. I know it's a sore subject.
No, just so the mayor and council know, the drop zone's a separate process than this master plan. And we decided to do that to keep both projects moving forward at a steady pace. It seemed, we tried to combine the two, and it tended to kind of put the brakes on. And we want to keep both projects moving forward, so we separated them. So this one's moving a little faster, and the drop zone's being treated as a separate project. That's the time.
But can the drop zone then be incorporated in this once it's complete?
It wouldn't be a part of the master plan, but generally, drop zones are not part of a master plan either. They, they wouldn't have to be because they're not part of an ALP update.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Matt.
You were talking something about the proximity to the highway on Penal Avenue. And this one project shows like an extension of the runway on the intermediate projects, number 20. I kind of lost you a little bit there. I see we're trying to move everything, I would say, to the west.
Right, so we're showing the extension to the runway five end. The part that I was talking about with, that includes Penal Avenue, is the runway protection zone, and that's a two-dimensional safety area.
That's what RPZ, okay.
That's what RPZ is, yes. And so what we're doing in order to shift that RPZ off of the highway is displacing that threshold and implementing declared distances.
So it actually moves, I mean, lengthen it, but lengthen it this further to move.
Yes, yes, we will be lengthening it to the west.
But more than the minimum, is what I'm getting at, so we can shift everything to the west?
Right, yes.
It's a problem when you take off this way.
Got it.
If you go to the west, it's not a problem. It's when you go to the east, it's a problem. At our current construction on the runway. So we'll move this back so this is not a problem.
Matt? Go ahead, Bob.
Question about extending the runway to the west. Does the drainage feature present any specific problems other than bridging it? Or, or would that have to be moved at some point?
No, we did, we did go through that. We did have a subconsultant on staff, an engineering subconsultant, providing analysis and some of these cost estimates. And what you're seeing, it's hard to see on this graphic here, but what you see shaded, kind of in blue underneath that runway extension, is that dry wash area. And that would just be an affected area that would have to be overcome through engineering. So bridging it, using a culvert. So yes, it is possible. There's certainly some earthwork that would, would need to be involved with that.
Okay.
And that's tied up in that project list and cost as well.
Okay. Lisa?
As far as outreach on CN Page, is that one dash seven? And you had three different meetings. I was just curious, did you get some pretty good participation from community members or just the advisory committee?
We had great participation on both fronts. The advisory committee was there. We had several different stakeholders that were representing different entities at each of our meetings. And so we got a lot of good feedback from them during our PAC meetings. And then as far as the public component with the workshop, we did have several people drop in. We did have these staged at different points in the process. I think our most well-attended workshop was the last one where we had, we were presenting everything at that point. But we did have a good turnout and were able to connect with some folks and answer questions.
Very civil.
You went to it.
I had a comment about the airport. I think a lot of people know now that Dave worked with the Chamber of Commerce very well to get the Chamber Lifestyle, as we're calling it, the Chamber Lifestyle Show out there. And it was a great success, so I want to give Dave a good shout out for that and the chamber. And it exposed a lot of people to the airport so they could see, wow, this is a great asset to our community. So I really want to thank you for that, Dave, because I know it was kind of a short thing, but it all came together and it was great. And I did have a, just a question, how many jets did you get for the Super Bowl? I saw you were waiting. I saw, I saw like two big ones one time when I drove by.
Well, thank you for the acknowledgement first, and we did count 29 jets that we wouldn't have otherwise seen, which was an unusually high number for us. So we're very proud of that, and then congrats to our staff. We took care of all those jets.
And we had enough fuel for? But that's the neat thing, because I know there's a lot of landing issues up in the valley where they could land but not park, so I imagine they dropped people there and then come down and park here.
Yeah, we were basically an overflow airport, but there was a lot of overflow.
Great.
It could be used as emergency landing. We did not use it for emergency purposes during these events. But any airport can be used as emergency landing.
Anthony, did you bring your jet in?
Actually, the owner flew me in. And so I have to be able to make this meeting today.
Any other questions or comments? I just, on a note to Dave, to you and your staff, and also to the staff of the Kaufman and Associates, you guys did a great job. I was part of the meetings, so it was, you did a great job managing it and really, I think, came out with a really good plan. So I want to thank you personally for, for all the hard work, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right. Next item then is item three. This is our presentation and discussion relating to the Proposed Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, affectionately known as WIFA. And Larry, I'll let you kick it off.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My most difficult job this evening is making sure that I don't steal anyone's thunder in advance of their presentation. And so the mayor and council will be considering two debt authorization. And so the mayor and council will be considering two debt authorization resolutions later this evening in our regular council meeting related to two projects that are proposed at our water reclamation facility, our wastewater treatment plant. One that the mayor and council has heard about, which includes the expansion of our capacity at the wastewater treatment plant as well as the reuse infrastructure and sewer infrastructure on the west side. That particular project is, we're asking council to consider resolution in the amount of $34 million. It's roughly 35 million, which basically gives us authorization to begin to have some level of dialogue with WIFA for a potential loan for those projects. I do want the mayor and council to recognize that on both of these projects, we have not made a final decision to use WIFA, but on the one we're going to talk about here in a minute, it may be advantageous for us to go down that path simply because of some of the incentives that might be available. But the resolutions that you'll consider this evening essentially give us authorization to make application and be prepared to enter into a loan if we wish to go that route. But the project that I want to focus on tonight, we've got two gentlemen in the audience from Verigi, one that does not need an introduction. I still refer to him very, very commonly as the mayor, Ed Farrell, and he's got a peer of his from the company, Dick Williams, that would like to talk a little bit this evening about our wastewater treatment plant in regards to adding solar. And a bit of a history there, the mayor and council will remember roughly eight years ago, the city really got very focused and motivated to add solar to a number of our facilities and went through a number of infrastructure projects that allowed us to reduce the amount of power that we were purchasing off the grid and replace it with solar. And at that time or shortly thereafter, Ed and his team actually looked at the potential of adding solar to the wastewater treatment plant, which happens to be one of our biggest power producers, or users in all of our facilities. At that point in time, that particular facility is serviced by the Electric District Number Two for power, and they had not really advanced their solar programs or incentives similar to other providers. And as a result, the ultimate return on investment just did not meet the thresholds. Most recently, the mayor and council is familiar with the Inflation Reduction Act that was passed by the federal government and which offers a number of incentives for waste, for solar projects to governments. In fact, it's a tax credit that ultimately can come back to governments as well. And so that really got this team and our team very motivated. We've been working feverishly. Mr. McKenzie Letcher out of our office has been assisting in going through the evaluation of whether or not solar will work today. We've learned some other things about ED2, and they're much more, they're embracing solar much more today as well, and there are also incentives through WIFA. And so with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Farrell and Mr. Williams to come up and give the presentation.
Hey, Larry.
Yes.
Just a quick question. Will the presentation include a little bit of information on what WIFA is and what it offers, or just an abridged version?
Mr. Mayor, I can, I can cover that as soon as we're done with it.
Just so council knows, I'm not sure that everybody up here is familiar with WIFA.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Larry. Appreciate that. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Edward Farrell, and just before we get started, there's like, I guess I might owe you a quick apology. I don't have a suit and tie on. I apologize. I didn't realize I was going to follow such a good lead, Mr. Dave over here, but we're going to, we're going to give it our best shot here. I'm here tonight along with my colleague, Mr. Dick Williams. We're with a energy service company called Verigi, and what we do is focus on energy efficiency solutions focusing on the government sector. We have 15 years of experience behind us with three offices in the state of Arizona, two in Phoenix, and one in Tucson, with over 350 employees, with the focus of 99% of our work strictly on government, in the government industry. So with that said, as Larry explained to you guys, we were here about four years ago, and solar didn't quite make sense, but with the IRA, it became a game changer. So about four or five months ago, we began to do a feasibility study to bring solar back to the table for the possibility of solar at your wastewater treatment plant. So what I have here tonight for you are the findings that we found in that feasibility study, and we have a PowerPoint presentation here before you that consists of 47 slides. It should take about two and a half to three hours, depending on how many questions you all might have, you know? So Councilmember Herman, please pay attention to, you know, expedite those questions, you know, afterwards.
He's taking notes.
So before I get to the agenda on tonight's presentation, I want to recognize your staff. They've been outstanding to work with, starting with Larry and his administration and all of the folks over at the Public Works Facility and your wastewater treatment plant, opening the doors for us, giving us the data that we need, the site tours that we needed to take place to explore the possibilities with solar. All of your staff has made it a real smooth process, so we're very appreciative of that. So tonight, we'll talk about the wastewater treatment solar site plan. We'll go into 30-year savings summary with you, the benefits for the city of Casa Grande by doing this. We'll talk about next steps, and then we'll open it up for any questions or comments. Oh, I went back. There we go. So this is a bird's eye view of your wastewater treatment plant, and if you see the solar array looking north, what we have come up with at the time when we presented this to your council packet, we were still undetermined because we lacked one site visit and one more meeting with ED2 to determine the array of, the system, the size system of array that we were going to move forward with. It was going to be anywhere from two to five megawatts. But since then, we're here tonight to inform the council, and we've already informed McKenzie, that we will only be moving forward with the 2.25-megawatt system. After constant communication with ED2 and our engineers, it was determined that that is the best economic boost for the solar system to get the best return on your investment. So with that 2.25-megawatt system, that will consist of about a 40% offset on the grid for you. On a cash flow summary, what that consists of is a total, total payments of a 20-year amortization of $10 million, a little under $10,600,000. That gives you a 30-year total savings of over $18 million with the 30-year cumulative total surplus of a little over 7.5 million. The financing would be, we did the 20-year AM of total payments because the financing would become, would come under WIFA, which stands for the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. They would finance the remaining balance, and their current interest rate is about 3% right now. So with, as Larry explained to you, with the inflation reduction grants and the estimated principal forgiveness through WIFA with their GPR Green Project Reserve, which we will become more familiar with as the process with WIFA goes along, your anticipated rebates and reductions on the total projects, on the total project is about a little under $5 million. So what are the benefits that are this for the city of Casa Grande? Well, to start with, it gives you tremendous energy savings, and as Mary, as Larry mentioned previously, you, over the last eight years, you've done six solar projects within the city of Casa Grande. This wastewater treatment project, which is your biggest energy consumption provider, will just add to the list and show that you're continuing to improve sustainability within your city, which could lead to lower rates for your citizens and ratepayers, and could benefit for economic development enhancement, which I'm sure Larry doesn't want to hear that with all the economic development going on around here right now. But it also shows that you, as a council, will continue to show fiscal and environmental leadership and responsibility. So the next steps moving from here would be, we have already filled out the priority project list, which consisted of the solar array with WIFA. It was a non-binding application, which was just something to inform WIFA that we were, we were going to be coming with them with this project. We assisted McKenzie in that application process. We are, where we are now is tonight with the WIFA PFA, the project finance application, which is ready to go by the click of a button to submit to the WIFA process. We helped McKenzie in that process as well, and McKenzie, if I'm not mistaken, there was like 14 different applications in that process. So it was, it was a lot of fun. So we're, we've got that. The only reason we haven't pressed that button and submitted it is, as Larry told you, tonight in your regular council meeting, you will have before you a debt authorization to approve, not to approve, a certain amount to move forward with the solar project. Again, at the time, we thought it could be a possible five-megawatt project, and you have on your debt authorization resolution not to exceed $20 million. We're here to tell you that now that it's just going to be a 2.25-megawatt project, that will not exceed a $10 million project. So we are hoping that you'll approve that debt resolution authorization tonight so we can go back and do the final detail engineering and design, get a final price tag on that, and be able to submit it to WIFA by the end of March for their final approval date deadline. And then it will go for contract authorization in front of the WIFA board in April, and if everything's approved, with, on contracts approval in April, we could start construction as early as May 2023, with an anticipated construction completion of December 2023. So with that, that concludes our presentation, and we'll entertain any questions you might have, Mayor.
Anybody have any questions, Matt?
Why did we go with the 2.2 instead of the 5-megawatt?
So the 2.25-megawatt is right at the 40% production off-grid, so that's just enough power for you to create your own energy to use while the sun's up. When the sun goes down, you'll have to go back on the grid. We, our engineers found that it was that 40% to where it was just enough to where we didn't have to give any power back net metering to ED2, because the power we give back to them, they only pay four cents a kilowatt for, so it's not worth it.
So it's just the power that we actually use?
Use during the day.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And then the next question is, since it's at the, I don't, this is probably more for Larry question, but since it's at the wastewater treatment plant, that's an enterprise project, so would this go straight into that account? And that would possibly, I mean, affect what's going on over there?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Herman, the answer, short answer to your question is yes. It'll be accounted for as an asset in our enterprise fund at the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, the people don't realize, I never realized until doing this, how much energy it takes. Like you said, that's our biggest energy user in the city is the wastewater treatment plant.
Lisa?
Thank you.
Hi, Edward. Thanks for coming. And Dick, thank you for coming. As far as the application process, you talked about the number of applications. So what, what is that process? So you submit it in March. What are the chances of getting it approved? Are we competing with other projects and they only approve so many? Like what's involved once you submit that application?
So the application process, that's a great question, Councilmember Fitzgibbons. The application process, as we said, consists of about 14 different applications, and it's a variety of different types of applications. Financial information from the city of Casa Grande, the technology of the solar array system itself, the dirt that's being put on, the geotech services that are, of the dirt that's going to be put on it. All, you know, how's the connection going to be put up? Is the power company in agreement with this, and are they, have they signed off on it? All kinds of different moving parts come into play, and what, when we hand in that PFA, that project finance application with these 14 different applications, that's when WIFA goes to work and really dissects it out, and a lot of time spent. That's why WIFA doesn't even want to look at these 14 applications that we just completed unless they see an approval for the debt authorization resolution from the council saying that you're willing to put, to make an investment on this project if WIFA does the research and is willing to support it with you.
Okay. So really, once you submit it, we approve, you know, our step here, and once you submit it, it's really them authorizing that everything is in place to implement this, right? I mean, so it's not like we're competing with other projects and they're only, it's just to make sure that it's a viable project.
We do, because WIFA has a budget, right? So there is some competition.
Right. There's a certain pool of money, right?
Oh, okay.
There's a certain pool of money.
It's still a competitive, kind of a grant process. That's why, maybe you can just give a, just brush the surface because you can get into the weeds with what WIFA is.
Yeah, so, so the water, WIFA, the Water Infrastructure Financing Authority is an independent state authority that has been created specifically to finance water and wastewater-type products, projects, rehabilitations, construction, and the like. And the advantage of the organization is that they have access to both federal and state grants, number one, and number two, because of the amount of debt that they are, that bonding authority that they are issuing annually for the state of Arizona, it really drives down the interest rate. And Mr. Farrell talked a little bit about what they've seen recently with interest rates. Typically, you evaluate that against the bond market, whether or not you could go out to the bond market, and really, the primary difference between a WIFA loan, which by the way, our last expansion at the wastewater treatment plant was funded through a WIFA loan, is that they have a max amortization term of 20 years. You're not able to go over that like you might be able to do in a bond market. That really works nicely with the city of Casa Grande, because the council's policy has always been, you want to cap that at 20 years anyhow. So again, it's, it's really taking advantage of the bonding authority that they have and capitalizing on the interest rates. And if I can, Mr. Mayor, just expand on the Inflation Reduction Act. One of the reasons why we have acted so expeditiously on this particular project is that there's been a pot, there's been an allocation of money that has been granted through that program as well, and we don't want to find ourselves on the wrong side of the, of that money, so we've, so we've moved very expeditiously to move this project forward in order to be in a better position to receive some of the, some of the, it's not a forgiveness, it's a tax credit, right? That ultimately that would be granted through that organization as well.
Thank you, Larry.
Could I just clarify one thing? Is the way these loans are for WIFA, there's two components. One is called the Clean Water Fund, and the other is called the Drinking Water Fund. So since this is a waste reclamation plant, this would fall under the Clean Water, and the way this was set up originally by Congress through the EPA, every state gets so much money that they originally gave to every state that they reinvest every year and they re-up that money. One of the things, this is a nice thing that came in, as you might remember, the IJAH Act, that was the Investment, Infrastructure, and Jobs Act that came out like about a year and a half ago. Well, with that money, they actually replenished even more money into these Clean Water and Drinking Water Funds, and what happens is they make a determination of how much principal forgiveness you will get based upon, you know, the type, where the facility is located at, and part of the nice thing is that you're located in, where your plant is located in is the, you know, a Colonia-type area where your plant is. So that might help you actually get more than what we're even showing right now. But we use 20% because we know that they have a Green Project Reserve Fund, which usually gets 20%. If we can save at least 20% of your energy, which we're saving, as Edward said, 40%, so we know that you'll get that as a minimum.
Anybody else have any other questions or comments?
No, I just appreciate the fact what Dick just said, because I wondered when you were talking about the competitiveness, whether it was for state or federal money. So now that I understand that Arizona gets so much in that, correct? So now that I understand that Arizona gets so much of that, right? Good to see you, Edward.
Good to see you. Yeah, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. No other comments? Questions? All right. Nice work. Appreciate it. Thank you, McKenzie, too, for all your work on this, too. Larry, anything else?
No, Mr. Mayor's promised, we wanted to give you a few minutes to, to break before we start the regular meeting at seven. We accomplished that goal.
Once and, once in about 10 times. All right. We'll stand adjourned until 7 o'clock. But it is appreciated.